Is everybody in on Zoom? All right. I'll call the town council meeting to order. This is a special meeting for March 12th, 2021, 11:00 PM.
11:00 PM, sir?
11:00 AM. Seems like PM. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, I can make you stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Wes, would you call the roll?
Yes. Councilman Dumas.
Here.
Councilman Elway.
Here.
Councilman Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Graves. Councilmember Mills. Absen. Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
Four members accounted for. Mr. Mayor.
All right. That constitutes a quorum. We all declare it quorum. And I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The agenda is approved. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memoriam? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports. There are no standing committee reports at this meeting, no special committee reports at this meeting. But we'll move on to business. Old business, none. New business, which is the point of this meeting, is to review a policy for notification postings and to consider a resolution adopting, posting the policy. And for the record, note that Councilman Mills is now in attendance. So this is something that Lynn took on as a project. So I will turn this over to Councilmember Dumas.
The city of Holiday Island has a need to notify its citizens concerning our official actions and our regulatory decisions. And there are a lot of different statutes that tell us about what are different kinds of methods of publishing and posting those notifications are. And some of those things that we need to do for posting are included in this policy. The first one being the posting of our ordinances that we may pass. And secondly, is the posting of our financial statements. And because those two are different, I thought it'd be prudent that we, as a board of, as a council, to create a policy where we can find one place and make certain that we follow it and make sure we meet the statutes of the state. So is it necessary to read this policy? We published it in our announcements as attachments.
Yeah. Does anyone here want to actually read the policy? Or you just want to hit the highlights on it?
Okay. As we discussed in our workshop, the first bucket is the affidavit and proof of posting. We discussed whether it's important enough to document that we actually do it and make it a matter of record. And I took it from that discussion that we did. So the last two pages of this policy include an affidavit for no newspaper being of record in Holiday Island and also a proof of posting document. And those would be created by the Recorder Treasurer and specifically naming whatever posting that we have. And his signature should be affirmed by a notary public. So I guess as far as the discussion, is that adequate? Is that more than we should do? Is that appropriate for what we should do?
Based on what we've seen from other area municipalities, this would seem to me to be appropriate and accurate or adequate.
Okay. Second requirement then is that we, as a town council, have to approve where we're going to make our public notifications. And that's what Section 2, the locations and durations of the public notifications is about. It's a list of places that we've identified. And we talked about four of the five. Well, we talked about all five of them in our last meeting. But in the copies I believe that you all have, number five is listed as the Sunfest Market Cafe. I had a conversation with the assistant manager there and he was more than happy to accommodate the city of Holiday Island to post a bulletin board in his cafe. He thought it would help bring attention to the fact that they have that space available as well as it's a much better place than near his cart rack inside the store because it's so congested where the carts are, where the other bulletin boards are. So he was very enthusiastic about having that space available. The concern or question that I had that I was going to present today, this list is important because if you flip to Section number five, it says the annual publication of financial statements. In paragraph B, until a newspaper is published within the corporate limits, the Recorder Treasurer shall cause to be posted the financial statements in the first two public places designated in the policy. And that comes from the statute 1459-116, that we only post it in two places. So if we're going to, or I thought we ought to have a discussion, do you think the Sunfest Market Cafe is more public than the other three listed below it? If it is, it needs to be elevated to the second spot on the list. Personally, I think it is. I think more people probably go to the Sunfest Cafe than they would to the other three places on a regular basis. We're looking for a most public. The statute says it has to be most public places.
I would think they are. Does it really matter what order we're listing in?
Only, only in the fact that the posting of our financial statement says it's, we're to put it in the first two public places.
Oh, first, oh, okay.
First two.
I get it, yeah.
So it helps set the priority of which ones for that policy or for that posting requirement.
But what would be the disadvantage of doing all three?
Posting in all five places?
No, not all, not all five, but do the, actually you could only do, if we did one here outside town or I said, then I guess Sunfest could be the other.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what he said, okay.
So we, your copy, I believe, that was distributed has the Sunfest Market Cafe as number five. It needs to be moved up to number two. So renumber the whole list then. Be a suggestion that I had, want to talk about.
I would recommend we do that.
Okay. Then secondly, in that Section 2, there's a note there. These bulletin boards can be very expensive if we get something large. And we talked about during our workshop, if we end up with a 15-page ordinance, that's going to take up a lot of real estate on the board. So we may have to produce them in a reduced format font so they fit. And I was thinking, two pages on one would make them a five-by-seven. You stood up next to the board, you could still read it. And obviously, this could be posted other places. But we could need the requirement to get it posted by printing it in a smaller format. That's why that note says, "Space limitations may require the postings to be reproduced in a smaller size or format in order to comply with the posting requirement." That's why the note's there. And Section, where?
Oh, I was just going to say, I was wondering if you could at least put the heading in a larger font so they could read the heading and maybe a note on the bulletin board that a copy could be obtained at the office or by calling Wes.
Or it's online.
I think it's important to note that these laws were probably put on the books before computers were even dreamt of. And in practical terms, if people see something posted that they're interested in, they're probably going to go to our website and pull it up and read it.
Now, there, there are several people out here that don't do webs though, don't do websites. They don't do internet at all. And I think we have to make advances.
We'll comply with the, with the law for sure. But in practical terms, I doubt whether there'll be very many people standing in front of a bulletin board reading an ordinance.
And all of our postings are supposed to be available for public view in the city office. We'll have the hard copies there. You know, so that's another avenue they can use. Paragraph B in Section 2, "The documents will be posted within 10 days of adoption and shall not be removed fewer than 45 days after approval to the effective date." Those two dates are put on there. One, the 10 gives us opportunity to get it, case like today. If we're going to make a revision to this policy, we have to reprint that. If a resolution gets revised in the meeting and we want to reprint it, and that'd be the one that's signed, there'll have to be a delay in that. But the weather conditions, the availability of resources, just gives us an option that we have up until 10 days to get them on the bulletin board. The 45 days is there because there are some of the requirements I read, they have to be posted for a minimum of 30 days. So if we are at the 10th day of our posting and it hangs for 45 days, it was up there for 30 days or more. So I think that's why I put those two day limits on it. And there are some postings that say they have to be up there even longer than that. So as we require, those requirements come along, we'll amend the policy to say that this particular one has to be up for a period of time. I don't recall what type that was. And then additionally, this isn't in the statutes, but I put on there, links to the copies of the documents shall be made on the city website. Because I think that's what we want to do, that's what we intend to do. So we'll make it part of our policy that we do it. And that would give the person maintaining the website up to 10 days to get that done as well. So. Then the other, carrying on page three or page two, the third section talks about ordinances. There's nothing unusual there other than it says we're going to post it in five bulletin boards. And it cites the statute. Section four is the remainder of that statute. It talks about the codes, like building codes and plumbing codes, electrical codes. That's, those are the kinds of things it's talking about. The posters are reference. We don't have to post those codes on the boards. We just make reference to them and they're available for reviewing. And finally, the one that I have on here is the annual publication of the financial statement. And the statute allows us for, the statute allows us for it to post it on public places because we don't have a newspaper of record printed in this community. Any other questions or concerns about what I drafted?
Uh, question. Within 10 days of adoption, is that, if we adopt it today, you have to post it within 10 days of today? It's not prior to passage?
I didn't read anything that had to be prior to. There was no official notice that we're going to do something that you have to post notice for. The only place I see those kinds of notifications were like when we get to the point where we have a planning commission, you have to give public notice ahead of time that you're going to have your meetings. And I believe there were some things in there that there may be some advance notice requirements for those. But for what I've read and studied so far, what we have on this policy, there's nothing in advance.
And so if they're going to be there for 45 days, we're going to end up with multiple possible, multiple ordinances.
Likely, yep. So if, if we pass an ordinance that has an effective date 30 days from now, you would have to hang for 45 days past that date. So it hung on the board for at least 30 days past its effective date. That was my intent. So if my language needs to be changed, after approval and effective, or is it or? I don't know if there's a proper word there or a change.
Which, which sentence is it?
To be.
To be.
Not to be.
It seems clear to me.
Okay. But the intent was it'll hang on the board for at least 45 days past its effective date. That was my intent when I wrote that.
What size of the bulletin cabinet's going to be?
What we talked about is a three foot by three foot, so that'll allow us to push, post 12 documents.
12 pages?
36 inches, well, 12 pages, yeah. 36 inches divided by nine is four across by three deep. So it'll be 12 would fit on a 36 by 36. I looked at bulletin boards that were two foot by four foot. Obviously, that cuts down to six documents. The four-foot boards are just a pair of two foot, so you still want to get 12 on a board that costs a couple hundred dollars more because they divide it in the middle to put a door on it. So it doesn't, you don't gain any space on a, on a four-foot wide bulletin board. The three foot by three foot's the best mix to get us the most.
That should be big enough.
It's 12 pages of whatever we'd be posting.
Here, yeah. I, I think all we're doing is satisfying the statutes. I don't, I do not see that many people trying to go in there and read them. We got too many other venues where they can see them. They can, they can see them for reference and then go, you know, go to the other if they want to read them.
So my intent moving forward is once we adopt this policy, if we have a new posting requirement, we'll have to bring a resolution to the, to the council to approve amendment to the policy as we add more things to it. So there'll be a simple process, I think.
We're not going to have to post resolutions if you're just ordering.
That's correct. Right.
I just want to say, I think you did an excellent job on it.
Thank you.
Lot of research went into this because there's a lot of different posting requirements depending on the document. And a lot of that is buried in the bowels of various, there's no one state law that says, these are all the documents that you have to post.
Thank you, Jerry. He sent me a copy of a document that was prepared by the newspaper business, was it?
Arkansas Press Association.
Arkansas Press Association created a document that looked at all the statutes of all the publication requirements. So it's, it's pretty complete and a lot of stuff has to be published in newspapers, but it doesn't talk about the ones that we can hang on boards. And it doesn't list the ones that that's an alternative method. But at least it's a great research, resource tool for us to go look, helps me find the statutes. So thank you, Jerry, for that.
Um, technicality here, I know we, we, we were kind of caught in between being a town but knowing that we're going to be a city of the second class shortly. Um, so we, we like to kind of jump the gun in anticipation of becoming a city so that we don't have to go back and change anything. But I think any policy that we adopt as a town, you know, would, we can, if need be, we can pass a resolution when we become a city that said that any document that was previously adopted as a town will be assumed to be a, a city document as well. And with that said, I think we should change this policy to where anywhere it says city of Holiday Island, we should put town of Holiday Island because that's technically what we still are.
Okay.
The, the policy is not part of the.
The policy is referred to in the resolution, so.
Yeah. But I mean, okay, we don't have.
We can still approve the policy, assuming the changes that we're talking about today.
I can make those changes and send them to Wes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, question that I've had, and I don't know if we've gotten resolved, is the publishing of the annual financial statements. Ours for 2020 are all zeros. Do, does that need to be posted? And if it does, it's to be done by April 1, which is two weeks plus away. So will we have these places available to post it?
I believe we will.
By that date?
I believe we can.
You're going on the assumption that the 3 December is the valid starting date?
Well, that's, that's the official date that we were incorporated.
Okay.
Yeah, the answer to your question, Wes, is yes, the, the boards will be up by then. Because the whole point of having the special, I should have brought this up at the beginning of the meeting. The whole point of having this dealt with in a special meeting is because we were getting close to wanting to consider some ordinance, ordinances already as early as the next regular meeting of the town council. So because there was going to be a posting requirement associated with that, I wanted to have this policy in place, this resolution in place so that we could post the ordinances we're considering. So hopefully, they'll be in place by the next meeting, which we'll talk about a little bit later too.
Back on Wes's point about zeros, I mean, yeah, incorporation, we were approved as a, a town on December the 3rd, but none of us were sworn in until January the 4th, so.
I don't think we got.
I, I, I think we ought to run that, ask somebody to Arkansas Municipal.
Hey, I don't, you know, we, we didn't have a, we did not have a bank account.
Yeah, I mean, and technically, you weren't, you weren't the Recorder Treasurer and not obligated to keep any records at that point.
Um, and I don't, you know, we really weren't functional until.
No.
I think if you just call it.
Can I, can I get us back on topic? We can, we can talk about, or we can just let Wes do some investigation as to whether or not we actually have a posting requirement for.
I would think not.
Let, let Wes determine that. It would take minimal effort to do it, so. Um, okay, back to the policy.
I have nothing else.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any input on the policy itself?
We can go ahead and pass the resolution stating that you're going to just swap those.
Right. And for the record, the changes that we are making to the policy are changing anywhere that references city of Holiday Island to town of Holiday Island, moving item 2.5 up to 2.2 on page one and renumbering that paragraph. Is there a third change?
Uh, well, we've turned to the affidavits then on pages four and five. Those have the word city, should I change that to town as well?
Yes, for now.
Okay.
Okay, so those are the three changes to the policy. Now, we can consider the resolution 2021-018. And I have a motion to put this on the floor for consideration.
I move that we put Resolution 2021-18 on the board, on the floor, please.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Wes, you want to read the resolution?
Yes. Resolution number 2021-018. Resolution adopting policy for establishing posting and notification requirements for the town of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas the town of Holiday Island must notify its citizens concerning official actions and regulatory decisions and whereas there are many statutes with varying publishing, posting, and notification requirements and whereas the town of Holiday Island must comply with the state of Arkansas statutes governing how municipalities notify its citizens and whereas the locations for public postings must be approved and maintained by the town of Holiday Island. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town council of the town of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that, this, the, it's, what I have has got the city, but that should be the town of Holiday Island policy, publishing, posting, and notification requirements shall be adopted, approved the purchase of bulletin boards, construction materials, erection, and maintenance of bulletin boards, and the locations for certain, for permanent placement. Number one, approval for mayor to expend the funds as needed to purchase, construct, mount, and maintain five suitable bulletin boards at specific locations on Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District, I said land or buildings. Number two, approve locations for posting notifications. The town council designates the following five most public places within the corporate limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas for the purpose of notifications upon town-owned and managed bulletin boards. Number one, the bulletin board outside the entrance to the town office at 110 Woodsdale Drive, Suite 103. Number two, second place, the bulletin board inside Sunfest Market Cafe on North Wall at 1 Forest Park Avenue. Third spot, the bulletin board outside the entrance to the ballroom at Holiday Island Country Club, number 1 Country Club Drive. Fourth spot, the bulletin board inside the entrance to the Recreation Center at 13 Buckskin Lane. Fifth spot, the bulletin board inside the I said office boardroom at 110 Holiday Island Drive, Suite 103. Number three, adopt the city of Holiday Island policy for publishing, posting, and notification requirements. That's policy details the posting requirements for ordinances, financial statements, and other official actions of the town council as required by Arkansas statutes passed and adopted by the town council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of 3/12/2021.
Okay, are there any questions, discussions on the resolution?
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2021-18.
Ten minute motion to approve resolution. 2021-018, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Linda seconded it. Wes, you want to call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elway?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
That was approved the resolution. We didn't vote on discussing it.
We didn't need to vote on the resolution.
Okay. It sits where?
Yeah, all the discussion, it wasn't a lot.
Okay.
Okay, the resolution is adopted.
Let's see, who moved that and who seconded?
Um.
Ken moved and I seconded.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we'll get to work on acquiring the board. Um, it's going to run into more money than we currently have in the treasury. So we're probably going to pass the hat. I think it doesn't hurt to make that a matter of record that the council members are, have offered to, to contribute some additional funds until the city revenue starts to flow in. Uh, let's see, moving on on the agenda then. Public comments. I think Kathy Whitman wanted to, from the chamber, wanted to make some announcements. Is she on?
Uh, yeah, there is Kathy Whitman on.
If not, is anybody else interested in making any public comments?
Kathy Whitman, I'm going to speak to her.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had to unmute myself. Uh, yeah, due to the weather that we thought we were going to have tomorrow, and I was watching the weather this morning, and it appears that everything's going to be fine tomorrow. But we had made a decision on Wednesday. And so we decided to move the parade to next Saturday, the 20th of March. So timeframe's still the same, we'll still line up at the table office and parade up to Veterans Memorial Park. Stakers can still park along the street and can watch from their car, or they can get outside of their car and watch. get outside of their car and watch the parade. Um, don't need to be anti-climatic because it will be after St. Patrick's Day, uh, but we're hoping everyone will turn out. And of course, that morning starts, uh, our first monthly ass tournament. Um, and I don't know if you saw our live feed yesterday, uh, but I shared it on the Chamber, uh, Facebook. Uh, so all the details for that fishing tournament are listed on the Chamber website as well as details on the parade. And, um, apologies that it's not gonna rain tomorrow, I thought it was, so we moved the parade. So we, but we have a lot of activity still in our March twentieth, and just hope everyone will join us wherever they, um, do like, whether it's at Heflin here or whether it's at shopping center. Thank you for letting me speak, Wes.
I did watch that, uh, live feed on the, uh, Chamber, um, presentation yesterday, and, um, Brad Handley was on there talking about the fishing tournament. And, uh, pretty impressive what he's doing with that fishing tournament. It's kind of a all-year-long, all-season-long, uh, fishing tournament that culminates in a kind of a winner-take-all. Uh, lot of money available, uh, if you know how to fish. Uh, I couldn't catch a fish with a hand grenade, so I'm not going to, uh, participate in it. But, um, for, for those people that like to wet a line, you probably wanna look into that. It, it sounds like it's a lot of fun, and if you're good at it, you can make some money. And it will bring a lot of people.
Yesterday, the winner last year at Big Pass, it was their first time fish. So, if you could join in, if there's some large dollar around the ball, just.
Yeah.
Can I ask a que- oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask her a question about the parade?
Yes.
Is it like the one in Eureka Springs, you show up with a couple of cans of something and you can participate yourself?
It is, uh, it's a wheel parade, meaning, uh, you can show up on a bicycle or scooter or skateboard.
Or a golf cart?
Bicycle or, um, even a wheelchair.
Or a golf cart?
Wheels.
No motor.
Or a golf cart?
No.
No?
Unmotorized.
Unmotorized. No, I don't think so.
Okay, uh, thank you, Kathy. Uh, any other, any other public comments?
Hi there, can we get a little information on SB four sixteen, please?
Uh, name and address, please. All right, we're supposed to be doing that with comments, you know, name and address.
Hmm, okay.
I, I think we forgot that on Kathy Whitman. I can't tell who's talking.
Oh, oh, okay, I didn't.
Who was asking the question on SB four sixteen?
Hi, my name is Susan Rosen, I'm a resident of Holiday Island, I prefer not to give my address out over the internet. Can we, I'd get some information pretty fast, SB four sixteen, thank you.
Okay. SB four sixteen is a bill that was put together between the municipal league and the, uh, Arkansas Geographical Information System, our service, and in cooperation with the Treasury Department. The, uh, the way the law currently reads on distribution of, uh, what we call turnback funds, um, the, uh, the law says that the population has to be, information that Treasury uses has to come from the Census Bureau, um, or at least that's the way they interpret it. I think the actual law says that it has to be based on census information, but the, uh, there's a program within the Census Bureau called GUPCP. It's, uh, geographical update, population, something or other, something or other, I don't remember what the total acronym is for, but it's a service provided by the Census Bureau that where, where if something happens like an annexation or an incorporation, um, in between census years, then the Census Bureau does an estimation as to what the, um, population impact is of, of that on the parties involved. Um, the, um, un- unknown to everybody, including, I think, the Treasury Department, uh, during census years, that program is suspended at the Census Bureau from two years before the census year till two years after the census year. They just shut down that program and put everybody to work doing, taking the census and crunching the numbers. So, the sen- the treasury, the state treasury was not able to get population estimates for Holiday Island from, directly from the Census Bureau. Um, it was our understanding going into the budget year that that information could be and would be provided by the State Geographical Information System, Service, the same agency that provides, uh, official maps and things like that for the city. They did a population estimate and provided it to Treasury. Treasury said they couldn't use it unless the law was changed to allow GIS to be used in years where data is not available directly from the Census Bureau. So, the, um, um, the Treasury, GIS, and the municipal league got together, agreed what needed to be done, drafted a bill. Senator Ballinger, uh, ran the bill through the Senate, it was passed, and now it's in the House, and our representative and Holiday Island resident, Harlan Bro, is going to be, uh, running the bill in the House next week. So, that's SB four sixteen.
Okay, so, uh, follow-up to that question, um, would be then, um, so we haven't received any of the turnback money, and we don't really have an estimate on when we will receive our turnback money to start the city, which, uh, what is, how is attacking the budget of starting the city and running the city thus far, uh, for twenty twenty-one?
The, uh, assuming that the legislation gets passed this month, there is an emergency clause on it that says that it's effective as soon as the governor signs it, so we would anticipate starting to receive revenue in April. So from a budget standpoint, we would have lost our first quarter revenue for the city.
So then, that means that we are starting, um, out as a new city, new deficit.
Well, a deficit to the budget, but the budget will have to be readdressed. We're not deficit spending, we haven't spent anything. Any other questions on that issue? All right, um.
I have a question. Steph Laura Coon, I think.
Yes?
Yeah, another man, just another question, um, Barbara Coon, six two, Holiday Island Drive. I would like to know how a citizen such as myself and any other interested citizens can make a donation to the city until those funds become available?
Uh, you can contact Wes Philly. He will be, uh, more than happy to take donations.
Thank you, I will with that.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, moving on then to council member comments. Hearing none. I have a little bit of news, you know, the, the delay on getting the turnback funds is certainly unanticipated and, uh, um, not good news, but, um, on the, uh, grant for the road project, the, um, engineer, you know, we did turn in the grant to, um, have, uh, basically have Hoff Drive repaved, and, um, because there's, there's, it's, it's, there, there aren't a lot of houses on Hoff Drive, but it is kind of a secondary emergency route, and a lot of people take it as a shortcut to, you know, avoid Holiday Island Drive. And, um, there are some areas on the road that, um, sustained unusual wear and tear, let me put it that way, while they were repairing the landslide because of all the heavy equipment that was going in and out of there and hauling rock in and everything else. So we opted to pick that street to, uh, be a candidate for the, uh, grant money, and, uh, the engineer from the, uh, Department of Transportation was up here, um, this week, and we, uh, uh, one came up from Will Rock and two project managing engineers came over from, uh, Harrison. And, uh, we went out and, uh, looked at the, uh, at the road, and, um, we thought that there was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap on the projects. The engineer, um, informed us that last year they raised the cap to three hundred thousand dollars, and, um, he thought that, um, Hoff Drive probably wouldn't take all three hundred thousand dollars. So, um, he, uh, asked if there were any other projects that we might wanna look at to, to, um, you know, to fill out the rest of the grant. And, uh, it, you know, we've repaved a pretty good section of State Line Drive that they're already, but, um, there's still some sections, three sections that haven't been repaved that weren't in as bad a shape. State Line Drive and Holiday Island Drive basically get a hundred percent of the traffic that comes in and out of Holiday Island. Uh, well, I guess you could throw in Woodsdale too, but, um, so we looked at the three unpaved sections of that, and, um, uh, of course, that would, you know, if you put both projects together, that would be well over three hundred thousand dollars, but what he said was that the state can go up to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a project if the city wants to pay the difference between, um, the three hundred thousand and the five hundred and fifty. The advantage to the city would be that it would be, um, all bid at one time, so we'd get a better price. The, uh, state does all of the engineering, and, uh, all of the, uh, project supervision had no cost to us. And, um, so when you put the two projects together, if we take, you know, next year's, uh, what we would normally spend on repaving next year and add to that grant money, um, we could probably do that whole, um, that whole project. So, um, it's, you know, it's, it's a real opportunity for us. The, um, um, the engineer said that, um, you know, he's working on projects that would actually be done next year, so that's not a paving job for this summer, it would be a paving job for next year. But, um, so the, the process is that he does his estimates and everything, we look at it, if we agree, um, and everything is, you know, within our, you know, spending projections, then he turns it over to a committee that's made up of eight or nine mayors of small cities in the state. This program, this street aid, or state aid to street programs, um, prod- uh, fund is basically geared towards small towns. And, um, the mayors get together and decide, um, you know, who gets grant money and who doesn't for that particular year. Uh, the engineer said he has never seen a first-time submittal turned down. So he's, you know, he said he is very optimistic that our project would be approved by the committee. So, um, it looks like, you know, next year we're gonna, you know, end up with, uh, three hundred thousand dollars worth of money in addition to any, you know, turnback money and stuff like that that we would get to go towards fixing our roads. And if everybody remembers, that was one of the, one of the number one reasons why we incorporated was because the city has access to those kinds of funds that the district did not. So, uh, it'll go a long ways towards helping us, uh, with our road paving program. I'll keep everybody posted on where all that stands. Uh, any other announcements?
Dan, I might comment, uh, follow on your discussion. Um, Bandy Drive was repaved, uh, six, eight years ago, and there have been cer- certain limited areas where they've had problems with it breaking up, and they have redone it. Now with all the construction that's going on right there, loads of rock and dirt being hauled in and everything, there are additional areas that are showing signs of breaking up, so I foresee that there's gonna be additional problems in a fairly limited area there.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to deal with that as it, as it comes, you know. The good news is there's a lot of construction going on in, uh, Holiday Island. The bad news is the roads really aren't designed for all of that heavy construction traffic. Um, and in, in fact, um, you know, one of the things that we've talked about and not acted on yet was, uh, the number of trash collection, um, providers in, uh, in Holiday Island. The engineers from the state said that virtually all, you know, cities have passed ordinances, you know, limiting it to one, one trash collection service because of the wear and tear on the roads. When they looked at the damage like on Hoff Drive from, uh, heavy vehicle traffic, they said that a street like that would last forever without the heavy truck traffic. When you have heavy trucks running up and down it, it, uh, the road base just won't support it. So, uh, it's, you know, it's something we're gonna have to deal with. There's, there's a cost associated with it. I don't know that we can recover any of that cost from the people building houses. You don't wanna discourage people from building houses because they'll have to pay to repave the street. But, um, it is a problem in Holiday Island, but these streets, you know, really aren't, aren't designed for heavy truck traffic.
With the two weeks of ice and snow on it, it's not gonna help either.
Yeah.
We're in a lot better shape than a lot of the large cities that, you know, that, yeah, like Spring, Springfield in Missouri, they have got potholes everywhere.
Yeah, we got a few here now too that need to be addressed since the bad weather, but Kenny usually stays on top of that. Okay, uh, anything else, any other comments? Under scheduling, our regular meeting would normally be next.
Sixteenth.
Next Thursday, next Tuesday. Um, I'm suggesting that we move that out a week, um, in order to give us some time to get the boards put up, because I do wanna consider an ordinance, um, I only, I'm sure that by next week I'll have a significant agenda put together, committee updates and stuff like that, but we, we are getting close to wanting to pass an ordinance allowing the city to, or the mayor to appoint a city attorney. That has to be done. Um, we've done a, um, Um, we've done a, uh, we've done a, uh, inquiry, um, for, um, prospective city attorneys. We've basically decided who we want, um, no need to talk about that today yet, but, uh, when we get ready to, uh, actually make the appointment, we'll discuss that. But, um, but the law requires that we have an ordinance, um, to appoint a city attorney as opposed to electing one, so that's what I want to consider at the next meeting.
Point of clar- oh, you want to go?
The question I had was, does that ordinance require three readings twenty-eight days apart, or can an emergency clause be added?
You can, we could have an emergency clause on it.
Uh, just to clarify, when you say "we," you mean you and Ken have decided?
No, nobody.
Because council hasn't decided yet.
Well, we, we being Ken, uh, Wes and I looked at the response we got. We, we'd only got one, uh, one formal response. I did get a telephone call, uh, very last-minute telephone call from, uh, in fact, it was the, the, the date of, the cutoff date of getting, uh, applications in the mail, and, um, it was from an attorney in Harrison that heard through the grapevine that we were soliciting, uh, attorneys, and, uh, so I, we didn't consider because it was past deadline.
Uh, Dan, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, could I just give an update on that, uh, the process?
I as well, we're, we're up to our neck in it now, so we might as well.
When.
It's not on the agenda, but.
When we, when we started this, uh, I called all the small cities, towns within fifty miles of Holiday Island to find out who their town or city attorney was, and they got their names. Uh, some of them said, you know, some of this, I talked to several mayors, and, uh, they told me who they were, and they said some of them were interested, were not interested in, you know, any more such activity. Uh, but I did get, uh, a positive response from the, uh, city attorney for Berryville and, and Huntsville. Uh, the rest of them, uh, pretty much said, no, they, you know, they were at their capacity. So I sent requests for qualifications to the, the attorney for Berryville and Huntsville, and to Harrington Miller Law Firm, that is what the incorporation committee used, and, uh, who had indicated they were interested, and we only got a response from Harrington Miller, which, and they, their RFQ is very, they are very qualified, so.
All right, I would like to cut the conversation or the, the discussion off on this, at this point, not because I don't want to divulge any information or anything like that, but this was a special meeting called for special purpose, that's all we're supposed to deal with in the special meeting. So, um, when the time comes to, uh, about the next meeting, we will have a full discussion on the city attorney, uh, when we, uh, consider the ordinance. So, uh, are we in agreement to, uh, move the, uh, regular meeting out one week?
Mr. Mayor, um, what time are you thinking? I, in our family, I don't want to discuss it right now, but we have a medical issue on that day, but probably later in the day would work.
Yeah, six o'clock would be our regular meeting time, six P M.
I would think that should work, that I could be back.
Be the twenty-third, right?
Twenty-third.
Oh, okay, that's right, I was thinking this afternoon, fifteenth, which was Monday, and we're talking about Tuesday.
Yeah, our regular meeting would have been next Tuesday, so.
I would, yeah, I would think that I should be able to make that work.
Okay. So we'll move the, uh, regular meeting for this month to the twenty-third at six P M, and Linda will put out the Zoom meeting announcement as usual. Uh, any other announcements?
I'm just looking at chat. There was a comment, uh, Linda Harris said, "What about Chris Flanagan, local attorney at law?" I don't think he does any city business at all, he's more, more in private practice.
Right.
He was not interested.
He would have had the opportunity to run as a city attorney, I can show shoes, toes. Okay, no other big.
I have a question.
Oh, okay, who is that?
This is Linda Harris, for being Michael Pride.
Okay.
Uh, this, uh, Linda, I have a request that when you send out the notification for the Zoom meeting, is there a way, because I had it in an email, that, uh, is there a way, make it a way that we could copy and paste the link? Because I had them handwritten from, I couldn't get it to copy and paste. Just for simplification.
Can we put a link on our city page that would?
It's on the agenda as a link, if you download the agenda, it'll be a, a live link.
Okay, because I, I didn't even have the agenda, I thought, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll.
We'll consider other options, too, so.
Yeah, we should, we'll post the agendas on the website, that way everybody would have access to it.
Well, and that's what I told people to go to this time, was go to the website, pull off the agenda, so.
It's there.
And when you pull it off, it's a live link.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain them.
I think we have a raised hand by, uh, Rebecca. Did you want to comment, Rebecca?
She doesn't have a mic.
I guess she doesn't. Oh, she says, "Moving the meeting, ten days for notification for you." I don't think it's ten days, I think it's.
Two days.
Two, two business days.
Two days.
Two business days.
The twelfth and the, uh, right.
Well, I'd say the requirement is two days.
Yeah, the requirement is actually two business days, so we're within the requirement.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Move, Ken seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The poll for adjourn.